No sunny?
Hmm? No sunny, not so long, obviously.
Thanks Dennis.
No one ever sits in the front row.
Yes. It's like church and school.
Yes, indeed.
All right, good evening everyone. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 27th. It's just a minute after 7:00 PM. If you have a cellphone, if you could please put that on silent or vibrate, that would be helpful. And I guess as a courtesy to all people sitting here, it's just a request, it can't be a requirement, that you know, we not do overly applauding for certain individuals, that you know, we allow people to come up and speak. And if you could do that for me, that would appreciate it. We cannot restrict it, but I'm just suggesting it as a courtesy to other folks that may have opposing opinions. We will call the meeting to order. And the first item is the invocation and pledge allegiance, and Commissioner Rob Henshaw will be leading us in both of those.
Thank you Chairman. Just for the people at home, I'm going to sit near the mic because I'm going to read a prayer. In honor of the 4th of July, and this being the same month, I'm going to read the first prayer that was ever read in Congress. It's a shortened version of it. So pray with me. Oh Lord our heavenly Father, high and mighty King of kings and Lord of lords, who dost from thy throne behold all the dwellers of earth, and reignest with power supreme and uncontrolled over all the kingdoms, empires, and governments? Look down in mercy we beseech thee on these American states, who have fled to thee from the rod of oppression, and throw themselves on thy gracious protection, desiring henceforth to be dependent only on thee. Be thou present, oh God of wisdom, and direct the councils of this honorable assembly, that harmony and peace, and truth and justice, religion and piety prevail and flourish among thy people, and crown them with the everlasting glory in the world to come. All this we ask in the name and through the merits of Jesus Christ, thy son our Savior. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will have the clerk do a roll call attendance, please.
Commissioner Wheelock. Thomas?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Lemkul?
Here.
Henshaw?
Here.
Gilman?
Here.
Fleece?
Present.
Chairman Inman?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. We'll move on to item C, that is approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve. The first is the June 24th special meeting minutes with Senator Walker and Representative Schmidt. The motion to approve those is presented. Moved by Commissioner Max Bauer, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw to approve the minutes of June 24th is their discussion. Commissioner Fleece?
Roll call vote please.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemkul?
Abstain.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Abstain, not present.
Fleece?
Abstain.
And Chairman Inman?
Yes. You have five?
Yes.
Five votes. All right. Just for the audience purposes, when a commissioner doesn't attend the meeting, they have the privilege of abstaining from the vote because they did not attend the meeting. Now we now move to the June 29th regular board meeting minutes. Move for approval.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Lemkul to approve the June 29th minutes. Anybody want a roll call on that? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Close, passes. And we have the June 29th. Do we have the minutes distributed for that?
No, they didn't have it distributed, sorry.
Okay, so we will hold on that to our next board meeting. Moving on to the first public comment, and I would just let you know, the clerk will read the rules, and also, if there is an item on the consent calendar that is pulled by either the county commission or the public, I will allow public comment under that matter first before the board addresses it. So if you're here regarding the Employee Freedom to Work Act Resolution, item number 10, and if that is pulled off the calendar, I will allow public comment at that time as well. So we have our, and you're also welcome to do public comment now if you need to get back to your family or any other responsibility. So this is our first public comment, and the clerk will read the rules.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions. The chairperson should control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Okay. So you've heard the rules. We'd like to keep it within three minutes, especially if we have a pretty good turnout here at the board meeting. We have some individuals that have fill-out cards. Do any individuals wish to speak at this time, or do you wish to speak during an item under the consent calendar? Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak now.
Okay, you're welcome to come up. Okay, that would be fine. Come on up, state your name and address for us.
My name is David Graham, 1735 East Front Street. So I sit before you today completely disillusioned over the board's willingness to support Commissioner Gilman's motion of right to work. Regardless of your ideology, I do not believe that it's in the best interest of your constituents or Grand Traverse County to begin advocating for political issues simply because you personally feel strongly about them. As a resident of Grand Traverse County, I'm only able, according to the county board's rules of order, to quote, "address board the board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to county government," unquote. Why is it then that you are taking a position on this matter? This body has no more authority over right to work than it does over the construction of a new international bridge to Canada. Commissioner Gilman sets a dangerous precedent with this motion, and since he has clearly shown a willingness to share his views about a range of topics, I can only wonder what the next motion will be. Your position as county commissioners should not be your personal bully pulpit. Since this board will soon take a final vote on this issue, I feel the need to address a few inaccurate statements that have been made. First, the phrases "right to work" and "employee freedom work act" are misleading. Slick slogans designed to trick people into thinking this is an issue about workers' rights and personal freedoms. This is not true. In reality, it means the right to work in a unionized setting and reap the benefits of collective representation without having to contribute toward the cost of obtaining those benefits. Imagine if we could choose whether we wanted to pay taxes to support our roads, or say a war in Afghanistan. How many people would elect not to do that? Okay? Right-to-work laws, I'm sorry, as corporate financiers of right-to-work laws know, these laws directly limit the financial viability and political influence of unions. They also reduce workers' ability to negotiate favorable contracts, higher wages, and better benefits. This fact is borne out in statistics showing that citizens in non-right-to-work states have larger salaries. In addition, employers in non-right-to-work states are more likely to offer health insurance and pensions to their employees. Supporters of this motion have claimed that people are being forced to join unions. To be clear, the National Labor Relations Act expressly protects the rights of workers not to join a union. Employees who object to full union membership may pay only that share of the dues that is directly used for representation such as collective bargaining, not for lobbying efforts. Support of right-to-work laws argue that making Michigan a right-to-work state would make it more attractive to companies. Despite ambitious claims, they lack any reliable empirical evidence proving this correlation. It is very difficult to separate the impact of any single government policy from all other factors that shape the state's economy. The fact that states that share a common attribute might have a stronger average growth rate cannot be taken as evidence that an attribute is the cause of growth. To borrow an analogy from Gordon Laver, between 2000 and 2009, the states whose names start with letters N through Z had an average employment growth rate almost nine times higher than states whose names begin with A through M. Yet, no one would suggest that Michigan could improve its overall economy by changing its name. In closing, I'd like to leave you with a quote by Martin Luther King Jr., specifically because in this resolution, in this that you've approved a few weeks ago, it argues that right-to-work is a civil rights issue. Martin Luther King Jr. states, "In our glorious fight for civil rights, we must guard against being fooled by false slogans as right-to-work. It provides no rights and no work. Its purpose is to destroy labor unions and the freedom of collective bargaining. We demand this fraud be stopped." I appreciate you letting me come up here today and speak. Thank you.
Any other member wish to speak at this time? Yes, Randy Bishop.
My name's Randy Bishop, formerly of 2009 Timber Lane. I'm now a resident of Antrim County. But the reason I came down to speak is I'd like to give some specific examples that he just mentioned. For example, Boeing, they were considering the Willow Run bomber plant for expansion when leaving Washington State to build their new factory. They seriously looked at it, looked at the infrastructure of the building, they looked at the potential workforce, and they specifically chose South Carolina to build that plant because we were a forced-unionized state. South Carolina is a right-to-work state. That's a pure fact. Now, this bill that we have written and have given to the state legislators, both in the House and the Senate, specifically states that unions are allowed to flourish. This is not a union-busting bill. As the chairman of the Grassroots Committee for Michigan Freedom to Work, I can share with you this. Every single state, all 22, that have passed right-to-work in the past, have had increase in their union memberships immediately following passage of this type of law. The reason is very simple. And when you vote tonight, take this into consideration. When the pie gets bigger, it gets bigger for everyone, both union jobs and non-union jobs. When companies consider relocating a business, they won't even consider Michigan right now. When I ran for Senate last year, I had people who were headhunters for Fortune 500 companies. And they told me, "You're overtaxed, you're overregulated, and the fear of being forced unionized and shut our plant down? I won't even consider advising my company to come to your state." Why would we continue a practice that puts us at a competitive disadvantage? We've lost almost a million people in the last decade. Union membership is down. One of our people who are on our committee, we have over 170 leaders in the state of Michigan with over 70,000 grassroots members in support of this bill. Terry Bowman from the UAW plant at Ford Ypsilanti is a big supporter because he's afraid the UAW is not going to be in existence 10, 15 years from now. The concessions that they've had to make, the things that they've had to do, is because we are not a competitive state. All I'm saying is, look, we want union jobs. We want jobs. We want every type of job that's available to us. Let us, we the people, decide if we have an opportunity. When I was working for Ed O'Keefe at Chateau Grand Traverse last, in 2009, as the maintenance man, I asked for a raise. You know what Ed O'Keefe said? "Go into town, find another job that pays you more, and I'll match it." I couldn't find another job in Traverse City. We have, I work at Farmers Insurance, we have an entire file cabinet of dead files. There's people driving in this county that do not have car insurance. And I'm not just talking young people. I've got a 40-year-old lady that's losing her car to J.D. Byrider in Garfield because she was working at a title company and got laid off. She's been on unemployment for a year, and she can't find work in Traverse City. She's driving without car insurance, and if you go home tonight and she hits you, you're dealing with an uninsured motor situation because they can't find work. That's what this boils down to. We support our unions. We've got union members in our coalition. This is not a union-busting bill. We simply want the choice and the freedom so that businesses and companies will consider coming to Michigan and bringing those jobs. If half of them end up being union, fantastic. I'd love a union job. But the bottom line is, if they won't consider Michigan because of policies, political governmental policies that have been in place since 1947, the Taft-Hartley Act, and only 22 states have had the courage to repeal it, why do we want to keep holding Michigan and Grand Traverse County back? Answer that question, and I'll shut up. The bottom line is, give the people the freedom to choose, make the unions accountable to their members, let them write a check. If they want to pay their dues, let them write a check. Do not mandatorily deduct it out of your paycheck before you even get your net take-home pay. Let me write a check. If I want to be a member to the Sierra Club, you write a check. It should be the same way for unions. And therefore, unions would be more accountable to their members and actually provide a better service to the union members. The folks that are union members should join us in this effort. This will make their unions more accountable to them. But because they look at statistics from 20, 30 years ago, things have changed in the last 10 years, folks. We are under a completely different paradigm shift. In the last 10 years, things have changed. Take that into consideration when you vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay. Yes ma'am, and the glass is right there. You would be next. Yes, you, if you'd like to come up. Did you fill out a card, or no?
Yes, I did.
What's your name?
Just went on to. I'm Kathy Van Hollingen, 3937 Sherwood Forest Drive. I live here in Traverse City, in Grand Traverse County. There are 22 states that are right-to-work states, and these are the states in turquoise. Last time we talked about this, one of you said, "Well, if 22 states can have a so-called right-to-work law, why shouldn't we?" And I'm here to tell you why not. Number one is because in all of these states, they make, all of the right-to-work states, employees make less money than in right-to-work, in non-right-to-work states. And consumer spending is considered the main driver to any economic recovery, especially in Michigan, and if people have less money, they're not going to be able to spend it. There are several areas where these 22 states rank at the bottom of the states in the United States. One of these is in poverty level. Of the, and this is according to the U.S. Bureau of Census, of these 22 states, eight of the top 10 in terms of poverty level, eight of them are these, eight of these states, and 12 of them rank in the top 20 in terms of poverty level. In terms of education, I'm a teacher, and I know how important education is to a state. Terms of education, in terms of state and local revenue, I'll just show you, this is the listing of all the states, all of the ones that are in yellow, all are right-to-work states. 13 of the bottom 17 are right-to-work states in terms of what they give in terms of education expenditures. In terms of teaching salaries, I mentioned North Carolina last time. Teaching salaries again, in terms of what teachers make and in terms of the national average, the yellow states are in the bottom. All of those yellow states are right-to-work states. North Carolina, the average teacher salary is $11,000 less than it is here in Michigan, which is why several teachers I know that went to North Carolina left as soon as they can. And because teachers and any other people that could get a job someplace else, their education system in a lot of these states is not up to par. In fact, most of them are in the bottom of 20. This one is in terms, again, people with a bachelor's degree, 15 of the 22 states are in the bottom 20 in terms of people have, annual pay, 14 are in the bottom 20 in right-to-work states. Infant mortality rates and the number of doctors per 100,000 are two indicators of how good the healthcare systems are. Nine of the 10, top 10 in infant mortality are right-to-work states. Doctors per 100,000, 18 of the bottom, of the 22 are in the bottom 20 in terms of doctors per 100,000. So in terms of healthcare, in terms of education, in terms of wages, these right-to-work states are not something that you want to emulate. In fact, if you look at the map, a lot of those right-to-work states, hey, they supported slavery in the 1800s, they supported Jim Crow laws in the 1900s. I don't know if you really want to emulate those states, especially in terms of, they are the lowest in terms of healthcare, they're the lowest in terms of wages, they're the lowest in terms of education. So please, look at this with that kind of a, thank you.
All right. Yes ma'am, come on up. And I believe you filled out a card?
Yes, I did.
Okay, state your name, we'll pull the card for you.
Linda Brinson, 3727 Brayton Lane, Traverse City. It is my understanding that the role of the Public Health and Safety Committee is to oversee the health and safety of the citizens of our community. Therefore, I would like to address agenda item number 10, the Resolution Supporting Employee Freedom to Work Act. Because this issue does not pertain to or have relevance to county business, it doesn't warrant any discussion, action, or vote, and therefore should be removed from the agenda this evening. I respectfully request that one of the county commissioners make the motion to remove this item from the agenda.
Okay. Well, we're under public comment now, so we're not under action, so.
I'm sorry.
We're not, we're just under public comment now, we're not under board action.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for coming. Yes, second in the back. Did you fill out a card as well?
Yes.
Okay, state your name, we'll get your card pulled.
Elizabeth Webster.
Okay.
I live at 207 South Cedar Street, here in Traverse City, Apartment A. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm not a professional speaker, so if I stumble a little bit, please forgive me, bear with me. This commission is locally elected to represent the people who elected them. And I urge you to take that into consideration when you cast your vote this evening. You are, in effect, our representatives to Lansing. Therefore, I believe this is a very, a very good forum for this topic to come up. And the reason I'm here in support of the Freedom to Work Act is because to me, it's about freedom and nothing else. It's simply about freedom, the freedom to life, liberty, and self-determination. To determine for yourself where to live, where to work, how to spend the fruits of that labor, where to buy your groceries, what kind of car do you want, which organizations you choose to support. To deny anyone the right to any of these choices is to deny them their constitutionally guaranteed, God-given, natural rights of all people. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We have a couple other cards filled out. Does Gary Roush wish to speak at this time?
My name's Gary Roush. I live at 176 Highview Road. I'll just make this quick. I was forced to be a member of a union for 32 years in order to be employed in the state in the occupation that I chose. That union was diametrically opposed to everything I believed in morally and politically. And yet, year after year, I was forced to be a member of that organization. That organization, whose national affiliate this year will be celebrating the victory of Mao Zedong in Communist China. I think it's a terrible injustice to make a person belong to an association which is opposed to everything that that person believes in and everything that that person works for. I think we should have the freedom to choose whether you want to be a member of that association or not. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Does Jody Ferry wish to speak at this time?
Good evening. I'm Jody Ferry, and I reside at 2054 Arrowhead Drive here in Traverse City. And I want to thank you, all commissioners, for allowing us to come and speak openly and give our input on this issue. As I am often reminded from our Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unenable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to ensure these rights, governments are instituted among men, driving their powers from the consent of the governed, and that whenever any form of government comes destructive, becomes destructive of these ends, is the right of the people to alter. And as a person created by God with the rights extended to all of us here tonight, I believe that the right to work, as a part of my right of life, giving me the liberty to make my own choices and allowed me the direction of my pursuit of happiness, I firmly support this issue. Growing up in the Detroit area, my father was employed by General Motors as a white-collar worker. Yet, my mother did volunteer work with May Ruthers, Walter Ruthers' wife, and they were close friends until Ruthers' tragic death in 1970. So I was able to understand both spectrums. When I first began teaching in Ohio, I was given the choice to join the union or not. Now, as a retired teacher of 25 years here in Traverse City through TCAPs, I never had the choice of being a member of TCEA without having to pay a hefty fee. I felt it was imperative for me to be a member for two reasons. First, they took my money, and secondly, I wanted to know where my money was going. It's easy to tell people, "If you don't like the union, go find a job elsewhere." But in other words, those people are saying that my rights to liberty doesn't matter. And despite the mentality from some union members, I do believe there still exists a place for unions. When unions first began in the early 1800s, they were very much needed. And at that time, they needed to be revolutionary, to be heard and recognized. Today, they need to change their approach, as they have been around for over 100 years and are totally an existing entity. And by getting rid of some of these feelings and moving towards service-oriented products, individually priced, that could provide more positive attitudes and choices applicable to our 21st century. But the bottom line is the issue here tonight, as you, the people's representative, must make the decision on this issue, and I encourage all of you to take a stand guided behind the Declaration of Independence and our the Declaration of Independence and our United States Constitution, that government starts within our local community and support the individual's right to work. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you for coming. Bob Donick, do you wish to speak at this time?
I don't have a prepared speech. My name is Bob Donick, seventeen oh eight Kamashi Street, born and raised in Grand Traverse County. Yes, I'm a union member, not forced to be one. But I'm not here to talk about unions anymore or the Declaration of Independence, because I believe in the Declaration of Independence just as much as anybody else does. I do not believe that it's the county board's responsibility. Do you have this resolution? It should be defeated. Sometimes I think that particular county commissioner is grandstanding. This is not the only issue that has been brought up, but he does make everybody think, I give him that much. Please, let's stick to county business, Grand Traverse County business. I truly believe that's what you're elected for. Thank you.
Okay, we've completed the cards that were filled out. Does anyone else wish to speak? Just raise your hand during this section of public comment. Okay, I will allow a public comment with the item if it is pulled off the consent calendar, either by the member of the public or the county commission. Okay, we will close public comment now. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Before I do that, I wanted to check with our county administrator, Dennis Alloya, and ask him, do we have, in addition to his report, I think we had talked about an update on kids camp, but I'm not sure if you want to present that at this meeting or not.
I'm glad to. If you want to put that under the administrator's report, I can update you as you requested.
So we, okay, so you're requesting...
What was the issue?
An update on the kids camp issue regarding the item that Commissioner Max Bauer had brought to our attention. Is there any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, adding the kids camp update from the county administrators?
Mr. Chairman, I will approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Gilman, seconded by...
Fleece.
Commissioner Fleece. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Now we move on to special order of business, and the first item is a public hearing on the issuance of bonds by the county of Grand Traverse Hospital Finance Authority for the benefit of Munson Medical Center, Munson Home Care. And Dennis, is there someone here that could just give a real quick overview of this issue, and then we will open up the public comment?
Peter Eklund is the bond counsel for the Hospital Finance Authority. He can provide that overview, and Mark Hepler from Munson is also here.
All right, welcome, gentlemen, thank you for coming. If you could just give the commission and the members of the public just a quick overview of the...
Sure. For the commissioners, we are revisiting a hearing that we had before you back in April twenty-seventh. At that time, we had noticed for a bond refunding of not to exceed one hundred and eleven million. Because of the very nice interest rate market right now, the hospital is able to now refinance ninety-eight bonds that they weren't sure they were going to be able to do, as well as they had some tender offers out on some two thousand five and two thousand six bonds that have come back in a very responsive way from bondholders. So they're now coming back before this board to rehab that tougher hearing and now to move the not-to-exceed figure to one hundred and thirty-six million. So that, maybe Mark can get into more detail, but that's just kind of an overview of why we're having this hearing.
I think that sums it up.
All right, okay, thank you.
I also want to point out, Mr. Chairman, Dean Bott, our finance director and deputy administrator, sits on the Hospital Finance Authority, so he can answer any questions in regards to your position in this.
So is there any clarification questions before we open up the public hearing?
This is not new money, this is refinancing old money, so we're not adding more debt.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. We will now open up a public hearing on the issuance of the bonds by the county of Grand Traverse Hospital Finance Authority for the benefit of Munson Medical Center, Munson Home Care. Does any member of the public wish to speak under this item? Hearing no, person's willing to speak on this matter, we will close the public hearing. We will move on to the second item of special orders of business, and that is a resolution to approve the Hospital Finance Authority refunding bonds issued in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-six million.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve that resolution.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Lemko.
Support.
Seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Approved the resolution to approve the Hospital Finance Authority refinancing bonds issued in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-six million. Is there discussion? Commissioner Henshaw.
Just for clarification, and maybe for some clarification for our guests tonight. This is, my understanding, the hospital is getting bonds using the county's bond rating. The, and stop me if I'm wrong at any point, the county's not liable for these bonds.
Or are they?
If I may, the hospital is using the county's Hospital Finance Authority, not for their bond rating, but they're using it so they can borrow the bonds at a tax-exempt rate. By using a public entity, a conduit financing entity, the hospital can go to the markets. But these are not an obligation of the authority or of the county or of any entity of the state, and obviously, the hospital has to then go out, and they got excellent ratings by both Moody's and Standard Poor's, I think double A one... Moody's and Fitch. Moody's and Fitch, I'm sorry. And so their credit and the obligation to repay these refunding bonds is completely an obligation of the hospital.
No liability to the county.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions regarding that resolution? Commissioner Wheelock.
You know, I guess a couple things about this. I know, you know, I've been through these a couple times before, so, you know, I have most of the answers, but...
Can you anticipate what the savings to Munson Medical Center is by using the county as a conduit for this funding?
I mean, obviously, because it's a tax-exempt rate, it's probably not as much a savings as it used to be. The spreads now between taxable and tax-exempt have certainly narrowed, but, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if it's a hundred and fifty basis points to a hundred basis, so one to one and a half percent savings on a hundred and thirty-six million, that's a substantial savings for us.
You know, and I guess the point that I'm trying to make is, this is an opportunity that Grand Traverse County works with our community to save organizations like Munson Hospital, the District Library, and these kinds of places, and the townships that participate in water and sewers. If it were not for the county being able to do this, and with our bond rating and everything else, the savings to our community is substantial because of the county's participation.
That's right.
And I don't believe that the community recognizes what kind of a savings that is. You know, we talk, you know, I sat here when we bonded thirteen million dollars or something for the last emergency room addition, you know, and everybody looked at, well, why are we funding the emergency room? Because it saves the hospital money, thereby it saves our community money.
You're definitely correct. It's very much of value to us, and it does save a lot of money and is beneficial to the hospital.
Okay, any other questions on the motion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Hospital Finance Authority refunding bonds issued in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-six million. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next, we have a resolution to approve the per diem for members of the county of Grand Traverse Hospital Finance Authority. It is on page number nine.
If I may, this came up at the authority meeting, under section nine of the Articles of Incorporation, which this board adopts when you have created the Hospital Finance Authority, there is a provision that allows for the authority, if they so choose, to bring up a per diem, and then that would have to be approved by this body. In some discussions, it was decided that they would like a thirty-five dollar per meeting, per diem, as long as they're in attendance. There are a couple of members of the authority, there are five members, there are a couple that are actual employees of the county, they have already said that they will not be taking that per diem. So you're talking about three members, and this would be retroactive to January one of two thousand and eleven, so that's two meetings. So you're talking about, and one of the members is not even sure he wants to take it. So you're really talking about two members, seventy dollars for those two meetings, and the hospital has been very supportive, and I thought it would be good for them to then actual kick in for that per diem amount. So this is merely according to the articles that you need to approve.
Vote for approval.
All right, moved by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw, to approve the county's thirty-five per diem rate for the members of the authority. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Wheelock.
Dean, just because I have to ask, this money obviously has to come through our budget. Do we have a provision by which that the hospital can contribute money to offset this, or is this money that's going to be expended out of our general fund?
No. Well, it will be processed through the county's payroll. I will invoice Munson for the cost, so it's cost-neutral to the county. That's the way this resolution is written, if you approve it, and the hospital has agreed to reimburse us for that cost.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding the motion and the resolution? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Just a brief explanation to the members of the public. Under the consent calendar, we have receive and file, which is correspondence that has been sent to the county, including minutes of other boards and commissions under the county, as well as, we have three standing committees of the whole, and what they do is they discuss earlier in the month issues, and then they recommend at the end of the month to the full Board of Commissioners, the final approval. So to get on the consent calendar, it had to either had to be unanimous, or it had to be a majority vote within the members that were attending the committee. So it does give time for the public to give you notice as to the discussion and what is potentially on our agenda to discuss and approve tonight or not approve. So it's also a timing thing for public disclosure. So we will now read what we call the consent calendar, and that is, and she'll explain how that works.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussions. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, action noted, receive and file or approval as approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file, one, correspondence from DEQ dated July sixth, two thousand and eleven. Two, Northern Michigan Substance Abuse Services, Inc., minutes of May second, two thousand and eleven. Three, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency, Inc., minutes of May nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. Four, Board of Public Works, minutes of May twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. Five, Airport Commission, minutes of May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. Six, Commission on Aging, minutes of June seventh, two thousand and eleven. Seven, Sewer and Water Committee, minutes of June ninth, two thousand and eleven. Eight, Special Sewer and Water Committee, minutes of June twenty-second, two thousand and eleven. Nine, Conservation and Resources Alliance, minutes of July eleventh, two thousand and eleven. Referrals, none. Approvals, Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Ten, Resolution Supporting Employee Freedom to Work Act. Eleven, Approval of the Area Agency on Aging's Annual Implementation Plan. Twelve, Community Corrections Contracts for two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. Thirteen, Renewal of Mitchell and McCormick Server Support Agreement. Fourteen, Tuberculosis Macrobacterium Services Agreement. Fifteen, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office Surplus Vehicles. Sixteen, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office Surplus Items. Seventeen, TC Fleet Repair Oil Change Agreement. Resource Management Administration Committees recommends approval of the following resolutions. Eighteen, Amendment to the Employee Vision Plan Amendment. Nineteen, Amendment to Safety Policy. Twenty, Amendment to the Bloodborne Pathogen Exposure Control Plan. Twenty-one, MERS Annual Meeting, two thousand and eleven. Twenty-two, Stevenson Property Transfer. Twenty-three, Homeland Security Grant Funding for Purchase Generator. Twenty-four, Solid Ways Reciprocal Agreement. Twenty-five, Sheriff's Department Purchase of Vehicles. Twenty-six, Resolution and Appreciation for Community Support by the Grand Traverse Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians. Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Twenty-seven, Health Department Staffing Plan Amendment and Approval of New Classification. Twenty-eight, Budget Adjustments. And twenty-nine, IRS Increase in Mileage Rate.
Okay, the consent calendar has been read by the clerk. Does any member of the public wish to have any item pulled from the consent calendar and discussed later in our agenda? Yes, Bott?
Yes.
All right. Moved by Bob Donick. Any other member of the public wish to have an item pulled?
I'd just like to ask about the Airport Commission meeting.
Okay.
My name is George Powell.
George, okay. Name five. All right. Any other member of the public wish to have any item pulled? Yes, ma'am? Any other items to be pulled by the public? All right, hearing none, we will now move to the county commission. Does any commissioner wish to have an item pulled from the consent calendar that has not already been pulled by the members of the public?
Should we be pulling twenty-three off on that generator? Is that something where they're just going to let it go through, or...
I'm going to report on it in my section, and I think with that, you'll be able to leave it there. You can always, if you want to hold on it, that action will take place after my report.
So we want to pull that off then?
Let's just pull it.
Yeah.
All right. Item number twenty-three.
Twenty-three, page one oh four.
Okay. And I'll put Dennis slash her. Any other items? Commissioner Wheelock.
I guess, and I wasn't here last week, so I just wanted to ask in regard to the Health Department Staffing Plan Amendment and that new classification, is that position currently filled?
That's item number twenty-seven.
So we're looking for a new hire?
No, this is a new position that's a downgrade based on our other reorganization.
Well, I just wondered if...
Being advertised now.
Okay, so someone isn't moving internally into that position, or possibly...
Someone is, well, I don't know whether someone will move internally. Someone has vacated a position, the position is being downgraded, a lower salary, and we're advertising it. Maybe someone internally...
So that vacated position still remains vacant?
That's correct. Any other member of the commission wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number five, ten, eighteen, twenty-three.
Some of...
Moved by Commissioner Richardson.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Wheelock to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number five, ten, eighteen, and number twenty-three. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chairman Edman?
Yes. Consent calendar is approved. We will now move, just for the members of the public, we have a section after the administrator's report that we deal with items that are removed from the consent calendar. We will now move on to the administrator's report. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, we reported to you that there was a concern raised by the Homeland Security Administration as to whether, or that we needed to expend the money for the purchase of the emergency generator for the, or the generator for the Emergency Management Department, and had to be built and purchased by the end of the month. You asked us to go back and work on it some more. I'm pleased to report that because of the work of our staff, particularly Dean Bott, Danny Brown, Dan Scott, and then Tim London of the Homeland Security Office, they were able to find a situation in Homeland Security whereby the federal government had prepaid for equipment that was not actually built. We brought that to the attention of the state Homeland Security Office, and they concurred and approved the project. So we're moving forward the project with Cummins, and we're recommending you approve the bid as submitted under item number twenty-three that went to the committee last week.
All right, good, thanks.
So you want to make a motion to approve?
Well, we got to do that under items, pull under the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Any other questions on that report? All right, thanks for the good work for you and your team. All right, thanks for the good work for you and your team. We have second item under claims summary, which you all have on your desk.
Yes, everyone should have the claim summary for the month of July. We need two separate motions as we have claims included for Lark Lawn and Garden. So the first motion would approve claims in the amount of eight million, nine hundred eleven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Okay, move, moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the claims and counts for eight million, nine eleven, five eighteen, twenty-eight. Is there discussion?
Did we receive a letter from Lark requesting this?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I just couldn't remember. Okay, thank you.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Max Bauer.
Yes.
Lemko.
Yes.
Henshaw.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Leece.
Yes.
Wheelock.
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas.
Yep.
Richardson.
Yes.
Chairman Inman.
Yes, motion passes. Now we need a motion to approve the claims for Lark Lawn and Garden.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve purchases from Lark Lawn and Garden in the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars and ninety cents.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the Lark Lawn and Garden claim of eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety cents. Is there discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lemko.
Yes.
Henshaw.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Leece.
Abstain.
Wheelock.
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas.
Yep.
Richardson.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
Yes.
Chairman Inman.
Yes, motion passes. And just for the members of the public, when the commissioner bids on a particular item, he has to follow certain rules that are provided by the state in terms of their ability to bid, and one of them is to abstain and give notice to the board, which he has complied. Moving on to the kids camp, Dennis.
Yes, I don't recall whether we discussed this at the board, or it was just brought to the attention of the commissioners.
Dennis? Yes. Can you hear me? Speak a little louder in the microphone.
I don't recall if this was brought up at a board meeting, or just brought to the attention of commissioners, but Chairman Inman asked me to do a review of the day camp program and the costs and expenses associated with it. This is a program run by the city parks, and they use our civic center for the summer day camp. The revenues, the most recent year that's completed was 2010. The revenue for 2010 was forty-six thousand, thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. The actual net, or the actual net expenses without administrative expenses was thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents for that year. The letter from the city indicates they estimate that there's a three to four thousand dollar cost that is not included in that report, that would be for the office work and administration of the program. So we estimate that, according to the city numbers that they gave us as requested, that the cost of this program is roughly around forty-three to, or forty-two to forty-three thousand dollars, and their revenue in that year was roughly forty-six thousand dollars. So a net profit to the city of three to four thousand dollars is best we can tell from the numbers that they provide.
And there's a payment to the county under that expense sheet, or not?
There is. Eighteen hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
All right, okay. Does any commissioner have a question on the report? Commissioner Henshaw.
Dennis, do we know versus rent what it costs us to provide the facility? Do we have, have we costed it to see?
No, we haven't. There's nothing that separates the metering of the lights, or the heat, or the utilities for just How Arena as opposed to the pool, or to other sections of the facility.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Max Bauer.
If you take a look at, and I'm sure Commissioner Henshaw, you've noticed, when you sit and look at the claims, and you actually take a look at the electric bill, the electric bill is sectioned out. Sixty percent is charged to How Arena, you know, it might, and I can't recall what it is to the pool and to the civic center meeting rooms, et cetera, but that is broken out. This, the most recent bill that I saw, which was Tuesday, How Arena's electric was slightly over three thousand dollars for the month.
That is by no means scientific formula.
No.
It's a formula that's based on a yearly average, which includes the time that How Arena is used by the ICE Corporation for Hockey, which is a much more intensive utility use than what it is when we have day campers in, and the lights are turned on. So it's an average, but if you, I thought the question was, do we have, you know, kind of specific idea of what the cost associated with it is, and I don't believe that our numbers can be, are that specific.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that report? Commissioner Max Bauer.
I just wanted to let the commission know that the Parks Board did take this topic up, and is fine with the arrangement as it stands.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that other organizations use the civic center during the summer months when there is no ice. I have to compliment the Toxic Cherries for having such a great entertainment venue over there, and it's a full house of people that come out there to watch that. My wife and I had a chance to watch it a couple weeks ago, and if you haven't seen it, I recommend it. They're great entertainers, and they provide a quality sportsmanlike program for the people in our community.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? Hearing none, we will conclude the ministry, should that conclude the minister's report?
Yes.
We will now move on to items removed from the consent calendar. The first item was item number five under receive and file, and that was a set of minutes from the Airport Commission, and I just had it, and I just lost it. Hang on, I got it. We have a member of the public that wishes to speak on this. Could you please come to the microphone so everyone can hear you, please? State your name and address, and then we'll try to, I'll try to answer your question, because I'm the representative on the Airport Commission.
My name is George Palachi. I am a resident of Lelandale County, and the reason I brought this up on airport by its very nature is regional.
Correct.
So I thought I'd ask, I don't know what's in the meeting minutes. I'm curious, since most other commissions and visions neglect that airport, they don't consider it in any of their plans, what is the Airport Commission doing to involve that airport in any kind of development plans for this region? And that's why I was asking about the five twenty-four minutes.
All right. I will try to get this as best as possible. We have, it's sort of two-folded. One is that the Airport Commission, which is made up of representatives of Lelandale County and Grand Traverse County, it is a regional airport authority, so it's a two-county ownership, has members, and they are the governing board of the airport. They have primary responsibilities of the day-to-day operations and the budgetary, fiscal, and policy issues within the airport. They also deal with the vendors, FAA, TSA, and all the other facets that go with the airport in terms of federal agencies and airlines and vendors. And the other thing is the development around the land of the airport, and eventually, like, there's a new construction of a new tower that was funded by the FAA, and there is substantial room for additional economic development within the confines of the property of the airport. The airport manager does have a seat on the TC Talus Board, which is the regional planning entity for Grand Traverse County, among other entities that do planning. And so Mr. Klein, who is our airport director at this time, is making his way around to all the community leaders, including the chamber and other folks that would have interest in development, those kinds of things. But there isn't any, other than the grand vision, which is just a concept, there's really no, outside the confines of the airport, the airport is just a member of the community that gives input into how the community is developed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd add, you know, they were very involved in the grand vision process.
Yes.
In fact, there's a whole component of the grand vision that deals with airport development. But in addition to that, they also are a member of the Chamber of Commerce Transportation Committee, and they're actively involved in the Transportation Committee, which is a five-county committee.
Right.
In addition to that, they also work with the townships of East Bay, the city of Traverse City, and the township of Garfield, and the development of their plan, because they go through their zoning for development activities at those, in those townships in the city.
May I say further? I was, I worked for the FAA for thirty-one years, and we had initially a plan for development around the airport, which was ignored by most of the counties and townships around it. But I'm just curious, is there a website you have that I may keep in contact? Because I'm very interested in this.
Yeah, the airport does have a website, and if you contact...
I'm talking about your commission.
Or our county commission? Yes, we have a website.
GrandTraverse.org, W-W-W dot GrandTraverse.org.
And it'll be a subset of that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's a direct link, I haven't looked at it in a while, I don't know if there's a direct link to the airport.
I don't think there's a direct link to the airport.
But I'll tell you what, there will be, next day or two if there's...
Well, I'm appreciative, because as I said, I didn't think the grand vision paid that much attention to the airport, and all they were interested in is development around the airport. You develop around an airport, that airport could close its doors, and then you have a bigger problem.
Commissioner Wheelock.
The one thing that I think it's important to stress, too, Grand Traverse County is a finalist in a state's determination of what they're calling the next Michigan corporation. Grand Traverse County is a finalist in that selection and designation, and it requires that the county designate multiple modes of transportation of product to and from. The Cherry Capital Airport is a key component of that piece. The state has stipulated that there will be at least one designation north of US 10 in Clare. As far as I know, right now, Grand Traverse County is the only finalist that's north of US 10.
I appreciate that.
So that's an important piece for us, because the, without the airport, and without the, being able to document the freight that's coming in and out of our airport and the usage of our airport, we would not qualify for that designation, which will help as businesses choose to move into this community, there will be tax abatements for them before we get the designation.
I appreciate your answering my questions.
Okay.
And I shall keep...
All right, keep a good time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Larry, just a comment. I think it's important to note that when you go into that website for Grand Traverse County, people that want to can view all of our committee meetings for the last two years, three years?
It's a little over a year now.
Little over a year now. All committee meetings are on there, and you can watch all those meetings until you go back and see what you want to see, and determine what's going on. So I encourage everybody to use that website.
All right. Commissioner Gilman.
Might I suggest also that Mr. Palachi keeps his eyes open for an opening on the Airport Commission, at some point.
He's like, you're going to put me to work, or?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Lemko.
I believe we're receiving and filing.
Receiving and filing.
Receiving and filing.
Well, you approve the receiving and file, the Airport Commission minutes dated May 24, 2011.
Thank you.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Okay, next item is under Public Health and Safety Committee, item number ten, Resolution Supporting Employee Freedom to Work Act. Bob Donick pulled that. Bob, technically you have the floor at this time, if you'd like to address the commission regarding the pulling of this item.
We were not, I just wanted to know how we should move the vote, and that's why I wanted to...
All right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might add, at your place, you have two letters.
Yes.
One from, well, actually, three. One from Paul Postal, which was passed out to you, one from Jim Cruthers, that I think you all received it as an email, and then there was a petition of sorts, I think, that was passed out as well.
Right.
I just want to bring that to everybody's attention.
Right, and I'm sure all the members have received a barrage of emails, phone calls from the citizens of the county regarding this item. And so the item is pulled off the consent calendar, and as I promised the members of the public, I would allow additional public comment. If you have not already spoken on this issue, and wish to speak on this issue, now would be the time to raise your hand and to address the board. Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up front. State your name and address.
Evening. My name is Jeff Bush. My address is 19841 Carlin Road, Thompsonville, Michigan. I represent IBW Local 498 as Business Manager. I'm here on my members' behalf tonight, and just want to address a couple items with the right to work. Workers in our state have higher wages and better benefits than workers in states that have right-to-work laws, five thousand, five hundred higher, U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, 2009, excuse me. Our state has fewer people living in poverty, more people with health coverage, and strong workplace safety and health laws than states with right-to-work laws. The proposed law would unfairly force union members to pay not only for themselves, but for their coworkers, who want and use all the benefits of the union contract without paying their fair share. What other group in our state is forced to provide all the benefits of membership to people who don't pay for them? This is a direct assault on working people. Our state legislator and county should focus on strengthening our economy and making sure it works for all state residents.
Thank you. All right, appreciate it. All right, any, yes, ma'am.
My name is Jerry Irene Leroy. I live at 885 Southeast South Airport Road in East Bay Township. While you can quote statistics that say you have higher pay, that does not necessarily mean you have better disposable income. Having moved a few years ago from Texas, which was a right-to-work state, I have personally experienced that the cost of living in Michigan is far higher than it is in Texas. It has also been given statistics from several places that show that right-to-work states have lower taxes, have greater growth in businesses, and have a better business climate than do compulsive unionized states. That leaves us with a better disposable income, which means people have more to spend on their, on their own choices. So you not only have the right to join or not join a union with a right-to-work state, but you also get the right to have more in your own pocket to spend when you get to choose that. It's about individual freedom, as well as having a better standard of living from a right-to-work state. I personally also attest to the fact that the business climate is much better in a right-to-work state, being a small business owner myself that I've experienced here in Michigan. So please consider that what is higher figures are not always giving you better spending opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Susan Karakos, 4216 Bay View Point, Traverse City. I wasn't going to speak until this lady got up here, now I have to. The famous saying in this town is, "You with half the pay." And as I sit before you, you know that we are underpaid in this county. You had an opportunity with Segal to give the employees a raise, and you've decided not to. There is no disposable income if you don't give them the ways it begins with. I personally think that this is not something that is supposed to be before this board. It should be something that goes before the voters. And I don't know why it's even before the board, and why they think that they should be able to make a decision on this. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you for coming. Any other member of the public wish to speak on this item? Yes, sir. State your name and address.
My name is David Fashbaugh. I live at 725 Brackle Point Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. I represent the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 498, as well as with Jeff. I'm the local president and the organizer. I request that the board reconsider supporting the right-to-work resolution. This issue does not belong at county-level government. It is merely an attempt by a person not originally from here to bring problems here for his own political agenda. I can give you statistics and numbers all night long, but they don't matter when the propaganda would be speaking, that I'd be speaking against, causes bigger headlines than the facts and the truth. than the facts and the truth. If you support this resolution, you should immediately give up your benefit packages that you receive as commissioners, as I believe people should lead by example. What makes the leaders in wealthy of our country think that they are any better than blue-collar workers that have or would like to have the benefits of being union members? The right-to-work issue is a direct attack on the ability of all unions to function as a business by reducing their income. Less income for unions equals less unions, which in turn equals less benefits for workers, which in turn equals less tax revenue for state and local governments by lowering standards of living for the middle and lower-income class workers. I challenge every member to educate themselves on the issue and talk to a union employer.
Another member of the public wish to speak at this time on this issue?
Yes.
Okay, sir, come on up. You state your name and address for us.
Doug Cunningham, nine one three five Park Lane, Interlochen. I am a union member. I spoke at an earlier meeting on this same subject. There are numerous articles. But the most appropriate thing I've seen on this issue was in the most recent, one of the most recent Record Eagles. There was a political cartoon. It showed corporate America in a high place, in a pillared building, and it also showed the workers down below, the union and the unrepresented people. And they were fighting in that political cartoon. And the caption above was, "Just the way we like it." Thank you.
The other member of the public wish to speak on this item?
Their license is a Weyland, but I would not like to speak. I would like to speak on a behavior that was shown to me while I was speaking.
Let's clear the opinions first. If I could clear all the opinions first, if I could. Okay. Midge, did you want to speak? Okay.
I'm Midge Warner. I'm chief steward of Teamsters Local two fourteen here at the county. And a lot of what I was going to say has been set ahead of me, and I do support the people that are asking that you not support this resolution. Unions are important to the people and to the employees here at the county. It gives us collective means to bargain with the employee, but also gives us strength and resources to protect our jobs when necessary. Up top of the head, I can think of two occasions where we've had union employees faced with job loss, and the union supported them through grievance process, and these employees retained and worked as good and productive employees for many years and continue to work here. There are times when employees do not, do lose their jobs, and for just cause, but there are also times when employees get caught in the middle of something that they have no control over, and they end up the victim. In these cases, it's been important that we have had someone here that will protect the rights of these people. And had the union not been here, these people would not be working for the county, and their good skills would have been lost to the county. Sometimes there's just personality conflicts that get in the way of these things, and the workers do need the protection. As an employee of the county, I appreciate the wages and benefits that I've received. I've been with the county for, actually, just over twenty-seven years, a couple of weeks ago, and I worked and earned promotions. But through those twenty-seven years, a lot of the benefits that we have, I have paid for through the negotiation process, where we were offered a set amount as an increase or a less amount, but to improve which benefits we want. And in many cases, we improved the benefits we had. So, in essence, we did buy those by taking a lower wage. So, many times we hear about our wages and benefits, but I do believe that I have given for some of the benefits that we do receive. I do believe that the right-to-work resolution proposed is wrong for this county and for the state. Strong unions have given us safety in the workplace, eliminated sweatshops, obtained for the employee a standard of living above the poverty level. They guarantee safe, clean environments for workers, and I believe that in many cases, that if the unions weren't there, people would not be afforded these really basic things that are needed in a job. I think it's kind of difficult to come and talk in front of you people about this, because I am an employee here, and I am a member of the union and a high-ranking member. But I think it's important that we bring to you sort of the basic level, how it would impact us here too, because this is where you are, and this is what you see. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk here, and I hope you consider everything that has been said here. I really do plea, put out a plea to you to, please do not support this resolution. I don't think that it would be good for the people here of the county, and I think that in part, certainly, well, not in part, in a great deal, the unions have been very good for the state of Michigan, and in general, for the employees of the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any opinions or comments, other than the lady I'm holding on, on this topic? Okay, hearing none. Ma'am, you're welcome to come back and speak if you have a remark to make.
While I was speaking, one of your commissioners loudly groaned and made a negative gesture at me. I noticed that he did not make any disrespectful gestures or noises while listening to some of the other preceding or succeeding speakers, even if their statements might have been misleading or sometimes false. All of my statistics on the health, education, poverty, and income levels of these twenty-two states are factual, and I'd be happy to furnish you with the sources. My statement regarding the southern states had a basis. Wealthy slave owners and plantation owners convinced the Confederacy and the Civil War that the Civil War was a moral, was a state's rights rather than a moral economic issue, just like the National Right-to-Work Committee was in fact formed by southern businessmen to fight unions, not as a personal freedom issue. I would expect the same level of respect from people who don't agree with me, as you give to people whose statements you do agree with. I would expect an apology, because I do not think that anyone should have to have put up with groans or facial gestures just because they say certain things. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Betty Machewski, and I live at twelve fifty-eight Lake Drive. I'm a member of Garfield Township. I have had a business in the downtown area. I've had a lot of relationships with other businesses. I've done a lot of fundraising. And basically, all I want to do is just to reiterate that this is not a union-busting proposal. All this does is give you the ability to either be a member or not. You have the choice. That's all we're trying to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming. Yes, sir. Come on up. State your name and address.
My name is Gary Arnold. I live at one oh six Green Street in Charlottesville, County.
Okay.
I'm regarding this issue. This really isn't an issue, sirs and madam. People have a choice already that's in existence to join or not to join a union, the same as we have a choice to walk down a street or ride a bike. There's actually no need for any of this to be taking place. There exists, in all communities, not just in Michigan, but throughout the entire country, everyone has a choice to join a union or not join a union. So to have this presented as an issue in front of us is a waste of valuable time and resources, because it's only trying to beat a dead horse. Everything is already there in place for what can be effective for one community or another. The choices are already there. There's really no need to continue down this path. And furthermore, I would have to agree with other speaking members that this is not something that should go in front of a council, but go back to the state legislature and the state government, where it probably is much better decided that way. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak at this time on this item? All right, hearing none, I will close the public comment portion of this item being removed from the consent calendar, and I will now bring it to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. It is now pulled off the consent calendar. Mr. Gilman.
Well, let me, let me start. Let me start by, first of all, this is not a, an attempt to union-bust. And, you know, it has more to do with freedom. It has more to do with giving people a choice in their own affairs, and not feeling compelled to find another profession, if their profession is occupied by those they disagree with. The free-rider argument is a canard. The, the idea that they're, they're getting the benefit of the union negotiations, that people in a right-to-work state would be getting the benefit of union negotiations, is certainly offset by the fact that they must take the outcome of those negotiations. They're stuck with the contract. They can neither ask for more or ask for better benefits, and then they still don't have the protection of the union. So that is not a legitimate argument. As far as the, the relevance of whether it should be before the board, look at us here. We have a lot of people here who've shown up to give their, give their opinions. We've got union people, we've got non-union people, and we've got both on both sides, arguing for both sides. We are as close to the people as anybody is going to be, and this is a great opportunity to give your voice, whether you agree with me or not. And, and I'd like to at least acknowledge Midge's courage to come up, and, and, because I think it does take courage to speak either way. I'd really like to say, "Thank you for coming up and saying something," because not everybody feels that safe. Not everybody feels that they're gonna be treated fairly. I know of at least two people right now who can't come up and say their part for fear of retribution, not from the county board, but from the unions who represent them. The groan mentioned, I, you know, I'll say I'm sorry if it offended you, but I will tell you this, I don't appreciate a race argument inserted where there's no race argument. This is about rights. This is about freedom. This is about all of us, as equals. And, and I'll stay by, I'll stand by that argument. I really, I really will. And as far as what this does, how this affects us, is it makes those people who negotiate for us, if we are union members, more entrepreneurial. It makes them more accountable. That's all. Okay? In the twenty-two states where there are right-to-work laws, there's no absence of union. There is not a vacuum of unions. They exist. They still exist, and they still represent their members. And we had a sign here in the July sixth meeting, or we had a couple of signs here, "Collective bargaining is a right." I absolutely agree with that. I think you should be able to get with your neighbor and collectively get together and negotiate for your best benefit. Absolutely, it is a right. It is freedom of association. Again, it is freedom, and we're not, I'm not trying to take that away. And all this is, in the end, is a resolution that says to our legislators, "We as a group of elected officials who represent the voices of those in the county," all we're saying is, "We believe this will help bring Michigan back." And one final thing, as far as public-sector employees, I would argue, this could be the best thing possible for public-sector employees, and those people who are my friends and I associate with here at the county every day. What better for a public-sector employee? I mean, in Grant Travers County, we've had pretty, pretty decent financial resources over the years. We've done pretty well. It's, we've had to tighten up recently, and, and there have been some concessions given in some of the negotiations. But we're, we're better off, in better position than a lot of the rest of the state. Okay? There are some parts of the state, they're, they're flat broke. They're laying off police, they're laying off fire, they, they have no choice. They're gone. In a state with right-to-work, and we're, we're dead last, as far as job creation. And in a state with right-to-work, we're gonna create more jobs. More jobs means less people who are dependent on the state. It means there's more money left over. And more money left over means better, better ability to pay for those public-sector employees. You know, I, I think it behooves the public-sector employees to support this, this particular type of resolution, this particular type of act in Lansing. I think it's, it's better for us, and I think it's better for the public-sector employees. When you have more, you can give with more. And I'll, I'll leave it at that for right now.
All right. Any other member of the commission wish to speak on this or make a motion? Commissioner Wheelock.
You know, I tell people all the time, "I worry about things that I have control over." Whether the state of Michigan passes a right-to-work law or not, I have no control over that. I, I said three weeks ago, and I reiterate again tonight, I do not believe that this is a forum or a discussion that should be taken by Grant Travers County Board of Commissioners. This board is responsible to deal with the day-to-day operations and decisions and policies set by the Grand, by Grant Travers County for its residents and employees. We have no business having this discussion in the first place. Now, you want to talk about representation? I can call my senator, I can call my congressman, I write them letters, I talk to them regularly, I email them, you know, kind of slow, but I do get it done sooner or later. But, but the fact is, that's my opinion. The county Board of Commissioners takes positions occasionally on House bills or things that are before the legislature. This is not even a bill that's prepared and ready in final draft that we can read. You know, it's not like we're, we're looking at a proposed law and can have an opinion. We, we can't even see that. It's not here yet. I, I have no, I don't believe we should be having, it's, it's amazing to me, the number of phone calls, emails, and notes that I've got, but my, my little tally sheet shows that I have eighty-seven people that have told me one way, and eighty-three people that have told me the other. So I don't see where I've got a big overwhelming swell of the community that wants me to change the law, or change the way it's done. It's a split down the line. And I just can't imagine, you know, we've spent another hour here talking about this tonight, we spent an hour at Public Health and Safety, and I've probably spent at least three hours in the last three weeks with people on the telephone and reading my emails. And it's nothing I have any control over. I don't understand why we're wasting our time.
Commissioner Richardson, and then Commissioner Thomas.
Well, I'll make the motion, since you're looking for one. I move that it be resolved that the Grant Travers County Board of Commissioners take no position, either favorable or unfavorable, on the right-to-work resolution, with the suggestion that individual commissioners may decide on their own whether to offer his or her personal opinion on this possible state-of-Michigan legislation.
I'll support that motion.
All right. Moved and seconded not to take the resolution up, and that we, as commissioners, would express our personal opinion to our state representatives and senators. Is there discussion on the motion?
One, one thing.
Commissioner Thomas.
Mr. Wheelock said most of it. Even though I am not opposed to right-to-work legislation, it's none of our business.
Any other comments before I make one? Commissioner Henshaw.
Just seems to me, if this wasn't the place for this, why'd all these people come here tonight? It wasn't gonna make any difference. Where are we talking about it? I think the fact that we're here having this discussion proves that this is the place, and it proves that this is part of the process in our government. The things can happen from the bottom up. It doesn't have to start at the state level. It can start here. And whether it's this issue, or a work issue, or a humans' rights issue, this is the appropriate place. This is our community.
Anybody else wish to speak before we go to Ross? Commissioner Richardson.
I would suggest that the reason so many people showed up is because we put it on the agenda and suggested that we were going to take an opinion that some people viewed as an abrogation of their rights. And so, you say, "Well, we're going to take your rights away, but it's not really important, so, you know, you don't need to come." I mean, if you do that, of course, people are going to show up and offer their opinion. That doesn't mean that we should be talking about it necessarily, or that we have any really, any real say in that matter anyway.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak that hasn't spoke yet? I just want to make a quick remark, and then I probably won't complete everything I have in mind here, but I've been doing a lot of research on this particular item since it was presented to the committee, which I was unable to attend due to my brother's passing away. And what, the first issue is, there is a bill in the House of Representatives, the Michigan House of Representatives, calling for right-to-work zones. And I was basically stunned when I heard that from our state senator, and that when I, when we got into discussion about the issue of right-to-work zones, I was led to believe that that would be potentially, not necessarily, but potentially, the direction that the state could go in. And that means that they would legislate zones where right-to-work would exist and not exist. And/or make it a local decision on right-to-work zones, so the Board of Commissioners or townships or local units of government can create their own areas within their own confines of their government, whether there should be a right-to-work or not-right-to-work zones in their community. And I'm just deeply opposed to that. And my concern about not sending something down is that they take this resolution, for example, if this resolution was to pass, and they look at this resolution and they go, "Looks good. Let's create zones. Let's make it a local decision and let the local elected officials carve out their communities and create work zones." And I think that's just absurd. I'm against it. All it's going to do is create a nightmare situation across the state. And I'm real concerned that having that bill being submitted and having it discussed at the state level, I think we need to respond in some way. That's just my personal opinion. That was prior to my first blush on this thing. My first blush, as you know, and I was quoted in the paper, as saying, "Something like this probably should be just directed on a personal basis rather than a county basis." But, you know, given that the committee did recommend taking it up on a separate vote and passing it, I will, as chairman, give you that consideration that you did that. The broader views that are behind the scenes for this term right-to-work, to my surprise, has taken a number of turns locally in Lansing, and it was, and it's been within, I believe, the last 30 days. And that is that the legislature has passed and put into law that there can be no retroactivity pay during arbitration issues, and that state contracts cannot be held to the prevailing union rates. So, you know, my question to the folks that I talked to in Lansing that know something about this issue is, the state legislature has basically carved out the majority of what they wanted out of this thing. And so, I said, "Well, what's left?" Well, what's left is, you know, the personal decision by somebody coming into an employer, whether they want to seek that employment or that job and be part of a union or not part of a union, or pay dues or not pay dues. And that seems to be the last component or the last piece in this broad thing called right-to-work or freedom-to-work as I know it now. So, I guess I'm concerned that there's a state bill out there proposing zones, and it's being, in my opinion, talked about as a way of throwing this at the local units of government, rather than having the state legislature discuss it on their own merits. So, you know, I've got some, personally, I have some real mixed feelings about, you know, whether the county should take the position or just do it as an individual elected official. But the board has voted to take it up as an item. I want to let everyone know that, at the get-go, I didn't have a problem with the resolution. And in fact, I had made a number of private confidential phone calls to people that have been in the union here in Grand Traverse County and have retired from a union in Grand Traverse County. And it was their personal feeling that was confidential to me, that we have a great work environment here in Grand Traverse County. We have a very good relationship with the bargaining units. And the people that are in the, at least in their opinion, the people that are in the union, highly respect the union environment and are willing to pay for their dues. And they felt that even if the state passed this law, it would not have an effect on the bargaining units in Grand Traverse County. That, you know, the people that are in unions appreciate the unions here. They do a good job. We have a good working relationship with them. And that people would pay their dues and not voluntarily not pay their dues. So, there's a lot of opinions out there that feel that this resolution, even if the state legislature took action on it, would not have an effect on our local unions within the county government. And that the state has already taken action on the hard stuff, and that's the no-retro pay on arbitration, which I don't want to get into a yes or no, whether that was right or wrong, or state contracts that have to be done by prevailing union rates. But I want to let you know that, you know, even though I support the basic concept of what they're trying to say here, and I believe that the unions would not be harmed within Grand Traverse County, I would, as an elected official, continue to strive for good relations and fairness, and to provide the best wage and the best benefits that our county, number one, has been doing and has been graciously providing our employees. And I feel strongly that, based on my background, I would not take action on any item that I felt would have any type of negative impact on the people's ability to join a union or unionization, collective bargaining. I have absolutely no problem in those areas for people to do that, and I would never support anything that would detract from that. But I guess, based on the information I have today, I feel that the legislature can do what they want with this thing, but I don't think, in all honesty, I don't, I think that the unions and the county have established a solid foundation that I don't think that it would have any effect on people not paying their dues or leaving the union. The concern I have with the resolution at large on the floor discussing it is that it does not address what the state is currently talking about right now. And they have a bill in the legislature. And there's some strong feelings down there in Lansing that, you know, they're seriously considering not making the state a right-to-work. They're considering creating zones and throwing that on our shoulder. And that's totally outrageous to do that. So, you know, I would ask the board if they have any consideration in this resolution, that they add on the first, now therefore, at the end of the sentence, that the act should not cover, excuse me, the act should not create work zones only within the state of Michigan, because I'm deeply opposed to that.
So, those are my comments. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Commissioner Thomas.
Well, seeing as though I hadn't even heard about that till this evening, you may be absolutely right, but I'm not in a position, because I just heard about it. I don't know anything about it. Haven't read anything, so there's no way I can vote to affirm a move on the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Wheelock.
I guess the other comment, you know, and I understand that Grand Traverse County's relationship with the Grand Traverse County employees and their bargaining units is very, very good. But when I talk about how to create jobs in our community, you know, as a contractor and a businessman, you know, I've been through the whole, you know, what the prevailing wage is, where I'm paying laborers $27 an hour to stretch pipe, because that's what it has to be in Charlevoix County. I've been through all of that, which I don't agree with either, but, you know, that's a separate discussion. You know, if we, as a county board, want to make a difference in providing employment in Grand Traverse County and new jobs in Grand Traverse County, we do it through promoting our EDC, supporting our Chamber of Commerce, and trying to get on board with this next Michigan thing that's going to bring jobs here. And it's not jobs from across into Lillenau County. These are jobs, they cannot be jobs from within the, in the state of Michigan. They have to come from outside. This is, these are ways that we create jobs in our community. And, you know, all of you know that I'll vote for damn near anything that'll bring jobs into this community. And I don't believe this right-to-work legislation will bring jobs here.
All right. Commissioner Maxbow.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, if the motion could be reread.
Okay. The motion on the floor, did you just type this up?
Yes.
How'd you do that?
You're slick.
You just typed it up.
"Be it resolved that Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners take no position, either favorable or unfavorable, on the right-to-work resolution, with the suggestion that individual commissioners may decide on their own whether to offer his or her personal opinion on this possible state of Michigan legislation." That is the motion by Commissioner Richardson and was seconded by Commissioner Wheelock. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Henshaw.
You know, I'm just reminded of a country that invaded Austria and took it over, and the neighboring country, France, said, "Well, that's not our problem. We can't do nothing about that." And then they took over another country and another country. And they just sat there and said, "Well, that's not, that's not our problem. We can't deal with that. That's not our board's issue." You know? If it's the right thing to do for Michigan, then we need to take a stance on it one way or the other. We just sit back and play France and say, "Oh, that's not our problem. That's a state issue." You know? Didn't work out for them.
All right. Anybody else have any comments or questions before we call for a roll call vote? Commissioner Gillman.
As an FYI, the Taft-Hartley Act would not permit the state legislature to assign the responsibility to local municipalities to assign zones, just so you know.
This, they would have, the state would have to create.
The state would have to create the actual zones themselves.
Right. Well...
And that legislation is probably as good as dead, but I would suggest we add that, just so that's very clear what we want.
Well, I guess my only rationale behind not passing this particular motion is that I want some action sent to the state saying, "We do not want right-to-work zones."
Okay.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Henshaw.
No.
Gillman?
No.
Fleece?
No.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
No.
Lemko?
No.
Chairman Edman?
No. Motion fails. Six-three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the resolution with the addition that the act should not create work zones only.
Okay. And that would be under the first, now therefore, as the last paragraph?
Correct.
Last sentence. Okay. Is there a, it's moved by Commissioner Gillman. Is there a second? Commissioner Henshaw. Is there discussion on the second motion, which is the original resolution, which adds the sentence to the first, now therefore, the act should not create right-to-work zones only? Commissioner Richardson.
I will not be supporting this, obviously. There's a lot of comments, not so much tonight, but three weeks ago, about forcible unionization, people being forced to join unions. I would like to point out that the forming of a union is a decision reached by workers who wish to have a union represent them in their dealings with employers. That every job, even a small business, of which, by the way, I am, I'm a small businessman, and have been for 30-some years, has rules they have to deal with. You know, work regulations, forms of dress, when you show up, how much you get paid, things you have to buy to take the job sometimes, where you have to show up to work. Sometimes you have to drive 40 or 50 miles. You're not reimbursed for the cost of driving to that job. But yet, you know, that's not a decision you get to make if you want the job. Once a union is formed, and then the people who benefit from that union representation are asked to pay for it. They're not required to join the union. They're just required to pay for that part that goes for representation. And if that's too much of a burden, of course, they don't have to, you know, work in that environment. So, anyway, I will not be supporting this.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Henshaw.
I just had a question for our board attorney, Mr. Cooney. A member of this board accepted a large contribution in the last election from a union. I just wanted to clarify, is that a conflict of interest in this issue?
I don't believe so.
The last opinion I had from the previous prosecutor was that the contribution to a campaign for a commissioner is not a conflict. It was a previous opinion. Commissioner Lemko.
Yeah. I really think it's really important to recognize that everybody's had a voice in this, and I really appreciate that. I think it's also really important to note that our legislators do listen in to what we have to say. And you have had a voice, and that's the beauty of what we are doing here. We are creating an environment for the people in our community to have a discussion about an issue that they can all be very passionate about. And I think that's really important, because it's local. It's talking to our legislators about what's really important to each and every one of them. If we hadn't had this resolution, would we have had this discussion? Would they know how we feel? No. Because we are passing this resolution, I think we have the opportunity to let our legislators know exactly that our people in our community are very passionate, and they are very concerned about this issue. So, continue the dialogue, continue to have the discussion, and figure out what's best for the people in the state of Michigan.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Thomas.
Yeah, I'm probably going to look foolish, because I voted in favor of the last motion. My problem was us doing it. I'm in favor of the right-to-work legislation if they pass it, and I sure would like to know more about it, but I just didn't think it was our business in the first place, so...
Any other comments before I make a remark?
Well, I guess at the moment, the feelings from all my conversations from people in Lansing that have discussed this with, is that it would be very unlikely that the legislature would take action on this type of resolution. But they would be more likely to take action on this issue of creating right-to-work zones within the state of Michigan and call it good. And to me, that's totally unacceptable. And that's the reason why I'm going to vote for this, is that I want to send them a strong message that, for me, I deeply oppose it.
All right. Is there any other discussion before we take a vote? The motion is to approve the resolution, item number 10 on page 56, with the sentence being added to the first, now therefore, at the end of the sentence, "The act should not create right-to-work zones only." Roll call vote, please. Roll-call vote, please.
Commissioner Gillman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Richardson?
No.
Maxbauer?
Yes.
Lemkow?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Motion passes seven-two. Okay, we'll call for a five-minute recess. Thank you.
I know, a couple of years ago, Michigan was actually number four in 2008.
That concludes the consent calendar. Items removed. We go on to unfinished business. We have none. We have no new business that's on the agenda. This is the time for a second public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, we will close the second public comment. Do we have any commissioner comments or commissioner reports?
We have a-
Commissioner Henshaw?
Just an update on Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. We discussed last Thursday in our meeting the, the parity in funding between the counties. And just to refresh your memory, it's Crawford, Grand Traverse, Leland, Misaki, Roscommon, and Wexford counties that we came together to form this community mental health. And the, each county gives a contribution into the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health system as set forth by in the original agreement when we came together and, and I'll just read through them real quick. Crawford pays in $35,600. Misaki pays in $35,272. Roscommon pays in $57,425. Wexford, $76,543. Leland pays in $139,700. And Grand Traverse, our county, pays in $682,200, which is 67% of the contribution. And the issue of parity is mainly commissioners in Leland have brought up the issue, and what this handled is, Leland paying in 14% of that mentioned funding while they have 5% of the consumers. And in Grand Traverse, similarly, we have 67% of the funding that we're paying in while we have 43% of the consumers. And respectively, Leland is basically overpaying their portion by $88,000, and this commission is overpaying our portion by $240,000, which, as we know, in this coming budget year, boy, that'd sure be nice to have. So, anyways, the, the board of Northern Lakes Community Mental Health has appointed an ad hoc committee and asked me to chair it to get the commissioner representatives on that board together and discuss this and how it might be handled. So, if any of you want to shoot me an email with your suggestions, I'd certainly take them, and I'll be calling a meeting of that ad hoc committee, and I will keep you informed.
Commissioner Lemkow and then Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I guess my question is, is I thought that was legislated there when it became an authority, that those are the rates that were set, and I'm wondering how you could go back and revisit that. And I guess that would be the question I would ask you to research, if you could.
Sure. Certainly. Who else? Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I basically had the same question, which is just, you know, how did that happen historically? I mean, because of nothing else, I mean, we've, we've probably grown more than, you know, at a higher percentage rate than the other counties involved, and we're still way overpaying, so.
Yeah, I've got several pages of history. I'll be glad to forward on to you-
Yeah, if you would.
...provided by Greg over at CMH.
And I, and really working on some really distant memory here, but I think there was a lot of things involved in the discussion and negotiations with, with what was called Northern or Great Northern-
Great Lakes.
Great Lakes Northern Mental Health, is that they had, we had that state hospital closure in Traverse City, and there was a displacement of those patients into the community. So, back then, there was a higher proportion of people with mental issues that needed ongoing monitoring and assistance because the, because it was a regional mental hospital. The second issue was that it was folded under, somehow folded under Grand Traverse County, and that we had a, there was a defined benefit program, and part of the negotiations for the fixed pricing moving forward in future years is that they relieved the board, that board, as part of the negotiation, relieved Grand Traverse County of the unfunded portion of their defined benefit program. So, there were a number of, multiple number of factors that led into the dollar amount that we agreed to set, and I'm not sure if it was, I don't, to my knowledge, it could have been part formula, but it was part the issue of the, the closing of the state hospital and the unfunded portion of the defined benefit where we would not be held responsible for that unfunded portion because technically they were under the administrative agent of the county.
Those numbers are all in my documents, and I'll forward them on to you for your-
Okay. All right.
I've heard comments over the years repeatedly about the closing of the state hospital. We're three generations past that, folks. Why are we still paying 67%?
Right. Correct. It's not that it shouldn't be revisited or looked at. Commissioner Gillman?
I'd like to give credit to, to the mental health for forming the ad hoc committee, and frankly, I'd like to give some credit to Commissioner Henshaw for taking note of these numbers and the discrepancy. However it bears out, I think it's, it's very eye-opening.
Right. Well, it'd be great if we could renegotiate. Dennis?
I did talk with Commissioner Henshaw yesterday about this issue. I think as you do your review, it is important to also take into account the cost and the impact of each of the individual jails and the services provided to the jails, and look at the contribution for mental health because they vary widely from county to county what mental health provides to each of the jails. So, that's an important part to look at as well.
That being said, the, the treatment, the services provided by Great Lakes Mental, or Mental Health Now do not begin to compare to what we had in mental health services in our jail 10 years ago.
Also, check the legislation out on, on the jail through mental health. I think there was some legislation that said we couldn't pay for that or out of- The Attorney General determined that we had to pay for it. Yeah, but it couldn't come through, and I don't remember what that legislation was, but- The legislation put a one, was proposed- One year? And it, there was a one-year hiatus on it, which we're in now. There's supposed to be new legislation proposed to kind of address that issue, but if it wasn't for that change for the one year with the legislature, we would have been forced to pay for jail services, or it would have jeopardized their funding, the mental health's funding from the state.
Okay.
And it was an opinion, it was not a law.
All right. Good report, Commissioner Henshaw. Appreciate that. Commissioner Maxbauer?
At the last Parks Board meeting, we did talk, as I mentioned, about kids camp, and the conversation morphed into Maple Bay. And the Parks Director reported that we do not, you know, the Send Brothers farm a section of Maple Bay, and the Parks Director mentioned that there is no written agreement and there is no fee. They just simply farm it, and I don't know if that's correct, but, and I have a concern about this. The Parks Board didn't necessarily share my concern, but I would like to know if Mr. Cooney should look at this. I'm a licensed Realtor, and we were, we've always been schooled that, you know, even if you get a fee of a dollar a year, you know, you should have some kind of written agreement because after a certain period of time, and I believe in the state of Michigan, it's approximately 15 years, and they've been farming this for probably at least 10, I'm just guessing, I don't know the exact number, but people can actually, if you allow them to use your property without a written agreement and without a fee, you actually can take possession of that in the state of Michigan. Would you take a look at that, or do you share my concern at all? I mean, there may be a written agreement, but the-
I dealt with Maple Bay a little bit, but I wasn't aware that there was anyone farming on the property.
Yes, and it's been going on for years, and I-
Nine years at this point?
I'm concerned, and I may unjustly be concerned. There may be an agreement, we may be getting a fee, I don't know.
My understanding is it's seven years.
Well, there are a lot of requirements to establish adverse possession. One is that they have to believe that they own the property. I don't know if the Send Brothers believe they own the property, but it's something to look into, and written agreement would be probably good.
I like i's dotted and t's crossed, but that's just me.
I directed in a staff meeting today, I directed the, I don't believe, there is no fee that's collected. I directed Jason Jones to put together an RFP and to put this out on bid this fall so that there will be a, a three-year proposal received from area farmers who might do this, and then we take the highest price that will meet our regulations or our, yeah, the regulations we set. And so, he is going to do that. He was, initially, he was-
He was, initially, he was, he raised to me the point that there has been a discussion on the Parks Board about a use agreement and a discussion with a gentleman about using the property. And right now, they're in discussions with the Land Conservancy, who owns the adjacent land and who acquired the land for us, and that there may be some kind of plan that comes down as a result of that. I indicated to them that that may or may not happen, but one thing we know for sure is if we have a three-year contract that allows us to terminate it at any time, we're getting the best price for the use of that land. So that's the direction I gave him, and he will be putting that on a bid this fall.
Commissioner Fleece.
The concern I would have with that, Dennis, is I think before you put out the RFP, we certainly ought to have some input from area farmers because somebody might offer you a good price, go in, do nothing with the land as far as nutrients, putting them back, and literally strip them in three years. It has to be a balanced deal.
And when I talk about regulations that we would put in place, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Put some limitations on how we expect them to farm it and what their responsibilities are. But yes, that's a good point, Commissioner, and we certainly will include that in the RFP.
Okay. Mr. Henshaw.
You know, I almost think it'd be a good thing if Senn Brothers did take it by adverse possession because then we'd be collecting taxes on it.
Oh, my gosh. Can you imagine the taxes on that?
Then we'd have to pay back the trust fund.
The trust fund grant.
Well, my point is, I certainly support farmers, but I support them equally. I don't think the government should be providing free, tax-free land for a farmer for no charge because then he's competing with other farmers that have to pay those taxes. And it's just not fair.
Anything else, Commissioner Lemko?
Yeah, I attended the Addiction Treatment Services Open House last week, and I was very impressed with the changes that they're starting to look at, the upgrading of the facilities. And then I also asked them to come in and make a presentation to us at our Human Services Meeting to talk about the changes that they're implementing for services to their clients. So, you know, it's kind of an impressive thing with the Tekoski and all the different homes that they provide. So I hope that they do come in and make that presentation because I think it makes us all aware of the services that are being provided in our community. The other thing I just want to bring up is that I'm concerned about the, again, concerned about the Twin Lakes and the parties that are going out, out there. Somebody told me that the morning after, there are all kinds of beer cans out there, so I'm hoping that we would continue to monitor that a whole lot closer than what we have been. And also, the usage on the Myers property as to being used by people that just think that they can store things, and also the lack of maintenance on that property. Personally, I would like to see us look at the possibility and ask the Parks and Recreation to turn that over to the Nature Education Reserve, that's not including the soccer field, just the farm area.
Just the barn and.
The barns and that, and let the conservation district manage that for us. So I don't know, Chris, if you brought that before them or.
I have. I have. And the Parks Board is going to address that in a strategic planning session.
I see somebody build.
And have the discussion.
Somebody build the hay there last day or so.
Okay. All right, then we have Dennis, please.
But who's doing it, and are we getting a contract? And where are we going? I mean, I just have a concern about some of these issues that aren't seeming to be taken care of.
Jason Jones reported, I'm sorry.
Poor Dennis, he's got his hand up. If we can let him speak because he could probably answer a lot of these questions for us.
Two points. First, on the ATS program, they have changed their processes, and I had a meeting, Dean and I actually had a meeting with Greg Summers, our Community Corrections Director today, and Judge Phillips and Judge Steppka. And I think they are doing some things. I don't know that they're all good. And so it'd be good to hear from them. In fact, one of the things they've done is they've upgraded the level of care at their facilities, which means they will no longer take people that have felonies that were getting out on community service or on work release, which they always did in the past, which means we now have to take and transport these people to other counties to put them in those kinds of houses. So they may have tightened some things up, but they've also made it more difficult for us to use their services. So that's something that I know the court, and now I think we have some concerns about. So probably would be good to hear from them. In regards to the Meyer property, Commissioner Max Bauer is correct, the Parks Board took action at their last meeting to work on a development plan, a strategic plan for that facility. And I told Jason Jones today that one of the components that they should consider as they look at and evaluate that is to look at the possibility of turning that over to the Conservation District for management. And so they are going to be doing that. I think he had a discussion with Ben Purdy from Conservation District today about that, as a matter of fact. And I just wanted to also report on Myers' property. It is now cleaned up. The people that were storing equipment there have taken out their equipment. The outside of the buildings are now cleaned up and secured. We had MMRMA in there last week, our insurance company, and they were, I received a letter from Jason today, they're quite happy with the way the facilities are secured, and they feel that, you know, it's going along well at this point. But I did encourage him strongly to look at that because I think it was Herb's idea, and I think it was an excellent idea that that may fit better into their plan than it does into ours at this point in time.
Commissioner Gilman.
I just have one or a couple of things to say. The Planning Commission, my wife and I, we have, of course, the business, and occasionally we have extra items. I donated a recording device because the Planning Commission had no way of recording the conversations. They had eliminated from their budget the video recording of the Planning Commission meetings. So what I did was I provided to the County Planning Commission a recording device, which Midge much, she did a wonderful job in getting it set up and working with the technology that we have here. And so now that is available for review. I don't know if they have it online yet or not.
Well, Commissioner, first of all, you know, let me thank you, that was very generous of you to do. I met with John Sykes two days ago, and unfortunately, they're having some technical difficulties with it. It only recorded four minutes of.
Oh.
And I guess the sound was jumbled, so they're going to have to kind of work through that.
Get our money back.
It was very generous. Yeah. Well. Get what you pay for, right? It was very generous of you, and I know he's going to try to work to make it usable. I know he's going to be contacted.
Well, darn it, I wanted that recording in the last meeting. We effectively pared the Energy Efficiency Plan down from roughly 40 pages to about three, which is essentially the plan itself. It's formerly known as the Climate Plan, but now it's an Energy Efficiency Plan, and you should be seeing that fairly shortly.
All right. Commissioner Lemko.
I have two other things. August 4th, the Civic Center is having a master plan review for the general public to come in and talk about what they want to see for the master plan for the Civic Center. So I would encourage anybody that has an interest to attend that meeting, that's from 6 until 9 on the 4th of August. And then also, for all of us commissioners and for all the employees of Grand Travers County, we have the Wellness Luncheon at the Civic Center on the 19th of August, and we expect everybody to sign up and have a session there, if we could, please.
Okay, Commissioner Max Bauer.
I will not be at the Wellness Luncheon. I'm sorry, but.
That's because you don't wear a helmet for your bicycle.
It's because I have such a hard head. No, I'm going to be in Wisconsin visiting my in-laws.
Okay. Good. Anybody else? Commissioner Fleece and then Commissioner Thomas.
I, again, would like to offer the Morgan-Fleese heartfelt thanks for the recent loss of my sister. People that attended the visitation, the funeral, the cards, the comments, the verbal conversations I've had, we certainly appreciate and thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
I'd like to open a new can of worms.
Oh, God.
Wouldn't, I was just sitting here thinking, wouldn't Maple Bay be a great name for a golf course?
Oh, no. No, no.
Is that like cat licenses?
Yes. We could sell cat licenses on the roadside steamer.
Well, I just want to kind of do the Larry Fleese thing and just thank everyone again for your comments and cards regarding the passing away of my brother, who died at 53. Which kind of scares the heck out of me. So I'm still receiving cards and phone calls at home, believe it or not. So I want to thank all my friends and the members of the public and the County Commission and the members that work here at the county for continuing to think about me and sending me their thoughts and prayers.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we need a motion.
I'll support that.
Yeah. Just so everybody knows, we have notices and announcements for the Wellness Luncheon and tribal meeting.
Everything.
And we have no closed session.
No.
All right, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Be good.
Motion by Dick, seconded by.
Fleece.
Fleece. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We stand adjourned.
No, no, tonight, Rob? On the move to adjourn. On the motion to adjourn.
Not after that.